At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting of Thursday, September 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The first item will be the invocation by Cadet Joe Durand of the Salvation Army, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor and Assembly Members. Join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just give thanks for this beautiful day in Kodiak, Alaska. And Lord, I just ask that you just be with us today, be with all the decisions and all the conversations that are made and had here, Lord, and just give us your overwhelming guidance in all that we do. And Lord, I just ask that you keep us in good spirits and in good health. In your Son's name, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiaka Lutik people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Lutik region. We recognize the Lutik culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ains, Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Lidue, Mr. Sharrett.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Arndt.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you.
Move to excuse Assembly Member Lidue, who is absent due to personal leave.
Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Moving on, we have approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Scott?
Move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For the public's information, the Consent Agenda approval consists of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 15th, 2024. Next item we have is citizens' comments. This is agenda items not scheduled for public hearing and general comments. The local phone number is 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 855-492-9202. I ask that you please sign in and state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking, address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Thank you. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do it this time. Toby?
Hi, I'm Toby Sullivan. I'm the Executive Director of the Kodiak Maritime Museum. Thank you for listening to me tonight. Kodiak Maritime Museum has been looking for a home of its own, a physical space, since 1992. We currently occupy a small office space in the harbor kindly granted to us very generously by the city of Kodiak. We've outgrown that space several years ago. It's really tight in there, and we're hoping to expand. A longtime, lifelong resident, Jerry Markham, is hoping to convey several properties on Lower Mill Bay to the museum so that we can turn those properties into a regular maritime museum. As you know, these parcels require a rezone of the property from R3 to business. In July, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved Jerry's rezone request unanimously to rezone it from R3 to business. We're hoping the Assembly will follow that recommendation and vote to approve the motion tonight to move the rezone request to a further meeting in September where you guys can approve it. We're hoping that it'll happen tonight. The museum intends to use the rezone property as both administrative and interpretive space, which would allow visitors and residents to see artifacts and hear stories about Alaska's maritime heritage, as well as allow us to administer that and do fundraising and things like that. Kodiak Maritime Museum is the only museum in Alaska which aspires to tell the maritime story of the entire state, from the Canadian border in southeast to the reaches of the Arctic to the Lusian chain. Mr. Markham's gift and your approval of the rezone would allow us to accomplish that mission. Kodiak is uniquely situated geographically, culturally, and economically as the best place in the state of Alaska to tell these stories. Also, the Borough Comprehensive Plan includes the goal to enhance the visitor industry's role as a significant component of the Kodiak region's economy by supporting efforts to develop a maritime fisheries museum. There's a lot of support in the community for this to happen, and we're hoping to have a museum of our own very quickly. This will allow us to do that. We hope you'll support, the community support for this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Toby. Anybody else wishing to come forward under citizens' comments? Please do so at this time. Do we have any calls? Okay, go ahead, Sue.
Good evening, Assembly Members and Mayor Arndt. My name is Sue Jeffrey, longtime Kodiak resident here. You've probably have seen me around. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the rezone. I understand that there's, you know, serious considerations, but I'm hoping that moving it, I know the vote tonight is just simply to move it, simply, but to move it to a public hearing so you can hear from the public what they think about the idea of having this as a, potentially, it's not guaranteed, but a location for the Maritime Museum. I, myself, along with the late Wanda Fields, that would be Duncan and Wallace, and the late Weston Fields' mother, and I and Linda, Lacey Burns and Virginia Adams founded the museum in, well, I guess it was incorporated in 1992, so we founded it before then, to help the public here and also the visitor industry to understand what it's all about. They would go to the visitor center on the, we heard this from one of the staff members, this is what inspired us to launch it, the museum, because they didn't understand what all those boats were doing down there and what they caught and all of that. Well, the people in the visitors' office also didn't understand that. So we took it upon ourselves to educate the public. And so you're probably familiar with the interpretive panels along the waterfront. These, this is, the interpretive panels and every word of it in this book. I don't know if you've seen this waterfront guide. They've been kicking around for about, this was one of our first projects. And there's evidence of the maritime displays around town. And so logically, other visitors have asked over the decades, so where's the museum? And so we cleverly say, we're a museum without walls. And, but I think it's time now. We have a huge amount of, well, cannery, Toby can tell you along, other time about all that we have. We've outgrown the facility over there, the room that we're allowed to use, and we also, we do so much in a minute at a time, and I was told, don't run beyond your time limit. So if you want to learn more about the Maritime Museum, you can hear 37 years later. I am still very passionate about it. I think it would be a great location. And if you want to learn more about it, I will leave some of these waterfront guides for you to read about our maritime history and Alaska's maritime history. And thank you for your consideration tonight. I appreciate your public service, as you know. Goodbye.
Thank you, Sue. Anybody else wishing to come forward under citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to words and presentation. We have a proclamation here from the Office of the Mayor of Kodiak Island Borough, declaring September 16th through 20th, 2024, Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Whereas since 1942, Alaska Adult Education and Literacy Programs have been helping Alaskans by providing General Educational Development, GED, testing, which leads to high school equivalency diplomas. Each year, around 500 students graduate, enabling them to pursue post-secondary education, training, or employment opportunities. And whereas these programs assist more than 2,600 Alaskans receive adult education and literacy services annually from adult education programs throughout the state, provide more than 56,000 instructional hours annually, and provide service to communities throughout Alaska, transforming lives through education and strengthening Alaska's workforce and economy. And whereas these programs provide adult immigrants and refugees with the opportunity to learn English language and skills for citizenship, employment, and integrate successfully into the communities. And whereas these programs housed at Kodiak College offers adults on Kodiak Island the opportunity to develop skills and knowledge for education, employment, and citizenship, to increase self-image and self-direction, and to progress towards future personal career, training, and/or college goals. Now therefore, I, Scott Arndt, Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough, do recognize September 16th through 20th, 2024, as Alaska Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and encourage all residents to become feel, familiar with the services and benefits offered by the adult education and literacy programs in Kodiak, Alaska, and to support and participate in these programs. And, go ahead.
Hi there, Linda Himmelblum with Adult Education, and I appreciate you all recognizing this, and also wanted to mention that we'll have an open house on Wednesday, September 18th at 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So thank you very much to the Mayor and Borough Assembly Members and Manager for this.
Please come forward, and I'll present this to you. Is there anyone else that has any committee reports at this time? I'm going to move into the Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council presentation. And this is being done with Sue Sapi from Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council, and it's my pleasure to introduce all of you to her. She's born and raised in Kodiak, and it's a pleasure to have you here tonight. Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council has a meeting in town here tomorrow, so they came in this afternoon on the plane. Thank you. The floor is yours, Sue.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah. Should be green.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a brief presentation about what the Cook Inlet RCAC is about, and it's pretty image-heavy. So I apologize to those that are hearing this over the radio. But my name is Sue Sapi, and I'm the Director of Science and Research for Cook Inlet RCAC, and I grew up in Kodiak, so it's nice to be back. Of course, most of you are familiar with the Exxon Valdez oil spill. It reached shorelines spread over 1,000 miles along the western Gulf of Alaska coast, and it oiled different habitats and had different impacts depending on those habitats. And it was the currents that carried that oil away from where the spill happened. And so in this case, it's the Alaska Coastal Current, which is a nearshore current that's geographically steered, and is a density current that's due to all the freshwater inputs from the north coast and southeast Alaska. Anyhow, that carried the oil and smeared the coast along. So following that spill, there was legislation that was passed, the Oil Pollution Act of 1990, and that included a lot of things like escort tugs and expansion of radars and double-hulled tankers, and there were quite a few things. But one of the things was that they formed what they were calling the Terminal and Tanker Oversight Monitoring Section of Oil Pollution Act of 1990. And in the findings, they listed a bunch of findings, and I'm going to just summarize some of those things that I highlighted into this statement. Congress found that complacency on the part of industry and government contributed to the Exxon Valdez oil spill. To combat that complacency, involve local citizens in contingency planning process and establish a mechanism modeled after Solvo, which is in Chetland Islands where they have a lot of oil production and shipping. To overcome mistrust and confrontation by fostering, I'm going to emphasize this last part because we take it really strongly to heart, long-term partnerships among industry, government, and local communities in overseeing environmental compliance of crude oil industry. So we know that an oil spill in Prince William Sound can impact communities downstream. But I want to point out that there's very active oil industry in Cook Inlet. Most of it occurs in central and upper inlet. But the currents, the prevailing currents would bring that oil south and outside of Cook Inlet in the long term, and Kodiak is right in the path. And as we've shown with, we've done a lot of satellite drifter work with the University of Alaska, and you can see that drifter went straight from the upper inlet right onto Kodiak Island. So you're in the path from oil industry in Prince William Sound and Kodiak. So it was very important that when they wrote this legislation, they didn't just write it for the communities that were impacted by Exxon Valdez oil spill, but also communities that could potentially be impacted by the large industry that exists in Cook Inlet. So they formed two of these RCACs, Regional Citizens Advisory Councils, one in Cook Inlet, one in Prince William Sound, and you can talk to Amy all about it, and the Prince William Sound one. And in fact, I, including a little thing, they are also having a board meeting towards the end of the month, and theirs is going to be a multi-day meeting, and they have a public reception at the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center. So I'm sure she can tell you more about that. But I wanted to point out that there are two RCACs. And Open 90 says who needs to be on the boards for each of those organizations so that it includes the communities and the stakeholders that would potentially be impacted from oil industry operations. And so Cook Inlet RCAC representation includes government appointees that include the Kenai and Kodiak Island boroughs, and the cities of Anchorage, Kenai, Homer, Seldoria, and Kodiak, and then special interest groups that include Alaska Native Organizations, environmental groups, recreational groups, commercial fishing groups, aquaculture associations, and tourism groups. The ones on the left are appointed, the ones on the right are voted in by members of organizations that belong to those groups. And we also have on our board, sorry, non-voting representatives from most of the state and federal agencies that have any kind of interaction with oil industry and/or oil spill planning in response. And for Kodiak, we have two current representatives on our board, Mayor Arndt, who represents Kodiak Island Borough, and Robert Lindsay, who's represented the city of Kodiak for many years. So Open 90 is very specific, lists a long list of mandates for what these oversight organizations were supposed to be doing. And the language is the same for both RCACs, the tasks that are set out in the Oil Pollution Act of 1990. But it's important to note, and if you have a presentation from Prince William Sound, they'll emphasize different projects because the oil industries differ between the regions, the oil spill risks differ, the environmental conditions differ, and the resources at risk differ. So, for example, in Cook Inlet, we have active production platforms, offshore platforms, and undersea pipelines carrying crude oil to shore. We have active lease sales for federal lease sales with potential further exploration and develop, development. But we have far fewer tankers than they do in Prince William Sound. Prince William Sound has a lot, order magnitude or more movement of oil via tankers. And so their risks are different between the two. So I'm just highlighting a couple of these mandates in Open 90 that, that will lead you when I talk a little bit about the projects that we do. But for example, we are to devise, manage, a comprehensive program of monitoring the environmental impacts of crude oil operations. Study wind and water currents and other environmental factors in the vicinity of terminal facilities which might affect the ability to prevent, respond to, contain, and clean up an oil spill. Identify highly sensitive areas that might require specific protection measures in the event of a spill. And then all sorts of review and oversight for things like oil spill contingency plans, oil spills and drills. We participate at the incident command. Any new regulations or technology, we make recommendations and provide advice. We don't have any teeth. We have no regulatory authority. Most of the work at Cook Inlet RCAC is done through two committees, the Environmental Monitoring Committee and the Prevention, Response, Operations, and Safety Committee. And we looked at those tasks in Open 90, and we developed what we call programs. And each of these committees then develops projects that fit under those programs and help meet the goals and the objectives of that program. And so this has led to a whole range of projects and programs and projects, and I'm just going to whip through these and just read them off. Ice detection and ice camera network, geographic response strategies, oil spill contingency plan reviews, nearshore assessments, habitat mapping, attending oil spills, drills, equipment deployments, conducting risk assessments, conduct ocean observing and, like, data collections and modeling, circulation modeling, conduct contaminant assessments and monitoring, help with training and marine firefighting, data access and visualization, and potential places of refugees are just some of the examples that I have in that. But what I wanted to do is just take a couple of these and show that, that one little line, that one little title actually represents many studies and sometimes thousands of data points. So over the three decades that we've been in existence, more than three decades, we've conducted a lot of work. So when I say physical oceanography and modeling, that can include a lot of data collections like high-frequency radar that gives us surface movement, acoustic current profiling, which gives currents through the water column from surface to bottom, satellite drifter, where we can look at the tracks of something, how things, how oil would move in the long term, hydrographic profiles, and, and then we use that to help develop models. And we, of course, this is all in partnership with NOAA, the university, Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. We all work together to do this. And we'll use, we'll develop models, and then we'll test those models against known data that we've collected. And then where we think it's failing and where it's not matching the data, we'll go back and we'll do data collections. And so this example is, we know that we, we very poorly modeled freshwater input, and that affected the currents, that how the models would move the oil in the model. And so, for example, this July, we were out for two weeks on a partnership project with the University of Alaska and NOAA and the Oil Spill Recovery Institute, trying to collect data to improve our understanding of some of these very specific things where we know the models are failing. And why are the models important? Because in planning, you want to be able to plan and know if you have a spill in one location, where is it likely to end up? What shorelines are at risk? What resources are at risk? When we talk about contaminant assessment and monitoring, it's not that simple. We do offshore water column sampling, offshore sediment, you know, ocean bottom sampling. We do intertidal and shallow subtitle sampling. And we do contaminant assessments from invertebrates, both like filter feeders and deposit feeders, to fish, to even beluga whale tissues. We do a whole long list of contaminants. We look at sources, and we try to fingerprint so that we can understand if we do measure hydrocarbons in the environment, do we know what the sources are? Because there are a lot of natural hydrocarbons that occur as well. So we need to be able to understand the context and the natural background so we can interpret for any potential impacts from oil industry. And then some of our studies are Cook Inlet-specific, and some of them are Gulf-wide. So it covers a huge gamut. I want to talk a little bit about geographic response strategies. We know that during an oil spill, the responders are going to come out and try to get as much oil as they can through different technologies. But geographic response strategies are important because they involve the local communities and local stakeholders in developing these pre-planned deployment pans in a very sensitive site-specific way, all the way to the point where they take a map and they tell you exactly where the boom is going to attach and, and where it's going, what it's going to do on a flood tide versus an ebb tide. And we've developed these with the state and feds all over Alaska with, with our focus being Cook Inlet, Kenai Peninsula, Alaska Peninsula, and Kodiak Island Archipelago. But they're pre-planned site-specific response strategies that involve local citizens along with oil spill planning and oil spill response experts. And so this is just an example for Kodiak. So we have all these regions for the state. Then if you look at the middle top, that's Kodiak, and it's broken up into Kodiak regions. And then within one of those regions, this is the western region over there, that's, those are these site-specific response strategies that have been pre-planned. And then that's an example on the lower left of, you know, the tactics that would be used if, if oil was moving towards that specific area. And in the past, these decisions were made after the spill happened. So that's the benefit of these. One of the things that we want to do this year and next year, or just in the planning process, is a pilot project that's focused on mariculture GRSSs. So with the expansion of the mariculture industry in Kodiak, those sites are at risk, both oyster, kelp farming. And so we wanted to look at GRSSs not just from the point of view of deflection booming or keeping the oil away, but also are there mitigation measures we could do if the oil was coming? Is there something like, if the water's deep enough, would you just dump everything to the bottom until the oil, you know, passed and, and the concentrations were low again? So we want to work with local farmers and agencies to, to develop this pilot project. And then I want to talk a little bit last about a habitat mapping project that we have been very involved in. You know, because we have such extreme tides that we have a lot of intertidal habitat that's exposed twice a day. And both vertically and horizontally in some areas, just massive amounts of habitat that, if you have an oil spill that reaches shore, is going to land somewhere between high tide and low tide. So that massive nearshore habitat is very much at risk, and depending on the type of habitat, can have impacts on the scale of days, all the way up to decades and centuries, as they've shown in, in other areas. So we got very involved, and we wanted to understand exactly what kind of shorelines we had in our whole area. We wanted very good detailed data for every inch of shoreline. So we needed a way to do that, pretty cheap, and we only wanted to collect data from zero tide and lower. So we used a technique called shore zone mapping. And what we do is we fly helicopters along, collect high-resolution, low-tide digital video and photographs. We also have a biologist onboard, a geomorphologist onboard, doing narration as we go along. That imagery is taken into a media lab, and it's tied to a digital shoreline, and that shoreline is broken into units that are homogeneous units, and the morphology, substrate, wave exposure, features, including man-made features, what we call an oil residence index, coastal vulnerability, and the intertidal and subtitle biota are all mapped, a longshore and a crossshore for every unit, for every inch of the Alaska coast. About 98% of the Alaska coast, I should say. And then that also includes going in on, we have hundreds of these sites in the, in the Gulf of Alaska, where we go in and, you know, the, the top left shows you what you see from the air. But we want to be able to inform the mappers at species level. So we go in and we collect data so we can, can see what are this, the seaweed and invertebrate assemblages associated with those color bands that get mapped from the air. Some of you might recognize that's North Hugak, sort of west of Passake Shack, those huge columns. It's, it's so phenomenal. I love it. And one of our big goals always is to make this information usable because we want to improve oil spill planning and response and decision-making in the event of an oil spill. So we developed a pilot project that's now administered by NOAA and the Alaska Ocean Observing System, where all of this imagery is available online, and all habitat data can be queried and mapped online. And some of you might remember when COLEC went underground. And some of you might remember when the colook went underground, Dalphiciledek Island. It was New Year's Eve, middle of the night, huge storm. They were able to access the imagery and see exactly what the beach looked like. They thought it was going to go to this nice sandy beach on Ocean Beach, but it actually landed there on that headland. But they could pull up imagery, exactly what was underneath. That's that picture with the colook right there, that's what they saw when they did the overflight. So they couldn't see anything about the habitat, but they could use our information in the Alaska Shore Zone Program to understand what exactly was under there. All of that data that's available online has been collected throughout the state with all these partners that we've built up since our first survey in 2001. And it's originally was developed for oil spill response, a planning and response, but it's been used for so many other things, included by artists and researchers and people planning kayak trips. And then one last thing that we are doing that, where we flew and image the whole coast and we noticed that this kelp that's very common in southeast Alaska and along the west coast, macrocystis or giant kelp, had started to expand into the western Gulf. And we've been watching and monitoring its spread. And so we are going to continue that project. We have some field work going on in the Kodiak area next summer. And we'll be working with some local folks and to try to have a better understanding of moving in, is it going to displace other kelps or is it just going to fill a niche that hasn't been filled yet? So, and then I want to point out, we have a pretty robust public outreach program. Jalen Cockran and sitting in the back is our Director of Public Outreach. And he produces electronic newsletters, you can get on the mailing list, annual reports. We've done special publications. We do a lot of presentations. We've done some exhibits of some of the beautiful photography that we collect during the Shore Zone Program. We host special symposiums and we have event booths at various things. And then Shailen has recently updated our website and that's how you access it and that's our email addresses. And I really appreciate the opportunity to come talk with you.
Sue, thank you very much for the presentation. Shailen, is there anything you'd like to just quickly add? You're here and I end up working with you, so give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Arnt, against Shailen Cockran with Cook-inlet RCAC. Just very quickly, I want to mention we have a scholarship program for regional students who are looking to go into marine technology, that sort of thing, people who want to get into the maritime industries and also for environmental sciences. So if you know some kids who are going to be looking to go into those two fields, please send them our way. We have scholarships available that runs every spring. And again, just to reiterate what Sue said, all these partnerships that we've developed over the years, all the work that we do, we couldn't do without those partnerships, including the Kodiak Island Borough. So we appreciate the support and all your time. Thanks.
Thank you and thank you for coming to Kodiak and coming to our meeting tonight for the presentation. We appreciate it. So with that, we'll move on to public hearings. We have ordinance number FY 2025-6, amending various sections in Title II Administration of Personnel and Title III Revenue and Finance in order to clarify the interpretation of the two-thirds vote of the governing body. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2025-06.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. The current provisions of the Borough Code demonstrate inconsistencies in language regarding the determination of the two-thirds vote of the Assembly. It is necessary for us to correct those inconsistencies to avoid misinterpretations in the application of parliamentary rules concerning legislation and actions that the Assembly may approve or reject. The ordinance that is presented before you clarifies that the authorized membership consists of seven members as outlined in the Borough Code. Thus, a two-thirds vote of the authorized membership amounts to five votes. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions of Nova at this time? Seeing none, go ahead and open the public hearing. And the local phone number is 907-486-3231, toll-free number 855-492-9202. Ask you to sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body. And if calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Anybody wishing to come forward under the public hearing on this, please do so at this time or call in. Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, assembly discussion. Any discussion? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrod?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, zero no's.
All right. Next item we have is the Borough Manager's Report. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe the clerk sent out an email that you guys should have gotten this morning announcing the AML Annual Conference Registration is open for Assembly members that will run from December 11th through 13th in Anchorage. Each year, there's a call for AML membership resolutions. Guidelines for the resolutions are attached. They're the last two pages of your manager's report tonight. If you're interested in doing that, please let me know. Those are due by October 18th and they require an Assembly approval before it goes to AML. There are several board seats open, including the mayor's, the NACO representative seat. There's also a director from boroughs and a director from the Kodiaka Prince William Sound Region. So if you're interested in being on the board on AML, those seats are open as well. The joint use agreement got returned from the city of Kodiak with no changes requested. The Kodiak Island Borough School District is going to be taking the agreement to the school board as soon as we hear back from them and we have agreement, it'll come in front of the Assembly. Next week on September 12th, we will be reviewing our investment and baking topics. Also, one week from today on September 12th is the Kodiak Area Leadership Institute Rule Forum. Again, if you're, I went online and registered the mayor. If you are an Assembly member, you want to go, you're still able to, you just need to let me know so I can let them know who's coming. Peterson School roof had a small leak naturally on the first day of school in the office. The leak was identified through some destructive inspections on the interior of the office. They found it thanks to the hospital for allowing us to use their, Dave will have to tell me what the real name is, but it's, that's boring. There has to be something better than inspection camera, but it's one of those with the long tube with camera on the end so you don't have to draw, drill big holes. You can just drill small holes. We found the leak cause. I think that it is fixed. We're going to wait for another rainstorm to make sure that we're right and we're leaving that all open so it can dry out. But that should be taken care of and we should not have to deal with that anymore. In community development, Plan 2045, which is our comprehensive plan, is kicking off. There are three meeting dates and times listed there. On the 17th and 25th are in-person. One's happening at the Women's Bay Fire Hall and another is happening at Kodiak High School. On September 24th, there'll be a virtual meeting. Our local emergency planning committee advertising is done on Monday, so we'll be able to gather up those volunteers and be able to have a review of them and then start that committee backup. Our multi-jurisdictional, multi-hazard mitigation plan comment deadline has been extended to September 30th. Community Development is presenting at the Rule Forum next Thursday and so we wanted to be able to include or talk to them about that and then hopefully get some more comments from the rule communities. So we extended that deadline. And in assessing, the staff is doing in-person field inspections in Minascha, Bells Flats, Chinnyack and Peseg Shack. Thank you to Mayor Arnt for helping with access to the gated community in Peseg Shack, which is scheduled to happen next week. So if you lived on the other side of the gate, you're going to see some assessing community members in your neighborhood next week. We went down by one on the senior citizen disabled veteran exceptions. We only have six applicants left that were waiting to be determined by the PFD. For exemptions, we have one exemption applicant that is in a reconsideration. Our Kodiak Island Borough letter due back to them is due by the 16th. And we have another one in that appeal reconsideration period that we just found out this afternoon is going to request a reconsideration. And through some due diligence from our assessor, we sent out five courtesy letters to current exemption holders after finding out that there is a change in use in all or a portion of their properties. So we're sending out letters to let them know that they need to refile for their exemptions for those to happen next year. In engineering and facilities, our hospitals-based study analysis to the public and the Assembly is scheduled for the work session on September 26th. Our architect, Mr. Corey Wall, will be here to do that. We had some progress with the Borough Building boiler installation this week. The fuel piping is in place and the day tank is ready for programming by the subcontractor. The contractor is arranging for a Cummins generator representative to come up from Washington. That's scheduled to happen the week of September 23rd. The Women's Bay Playground installation is tentatively scheduled to begin September 9th. For the KFRC, if you remember last week, I told you four of the five things. We're waiting on our GSA rep. We did make contact with the GSA rep. Apparently she's been very sick, so we've made contact. She says she's making it through her emails and phone calls, so we hope to get responses soon. We did get the sewage lift station grinder pumps on island, so those will be installed here very soon so we can stop pumping out that. The old mental health facility item has been placed on the agenda for the work session on September 26th at the landfill. We are having a continued conversation. It happened a few months ago, but it has come back up with ATF about burning outdated demolition materials at the landfill. They'll be hauled to the landfill and burned there. I was very excited because I thought that might be there was something exciting to see, but I guess they're so old that it should be pretty boring. The ADC solid waste inspection is scheduled for September 18th. We're continuing maintenance on our electric fence to control our bear population at the landfill. The Baylor Building concrete floor, if approved tonight, is scheduled to begin September 23rd of this month. And we're holding a fall commercial hazardous waste event October 1st and 2nd. It will target commercial entities for collection and disposal of their hazardous materials. With the school district, even though I mentioned the Peterson roof, there was a leak, but the metal wall coping is still being installed. The project is getting, it's past substantial completion. We are waiting for louvers and actuators to come for it to be completely finished and then we'll have the inspection in October for the warranty. Contractor has reduced our operating footprint, so all of their material is in a very small area out there, so it's not impacting the school district at this time. Snow removal and ice control, I told you last week that Brecken informed us that they are no longer able to perform snow and removal of ice on the Bayview and Minascha service area. Staff is preparing proposals for those two service areas and our school district needs for the winter. An update on those RFPs has been added to the work session on September 12th. So when we go out, the RFPs will go out for Bayview, Minascha, and the school district at the same time. In finance, for those making full payments on your property taxes or if you missed your August 15th half payment date, the total due must be paid on October 15th to avoid penalties and interest. For those who made a timely first half payment on August 15th, your final half payment must be paid on or before November 15th to avoid additional penalties and interest. In our property assessment and taxation inflammation project, our next step is mapping data exports to the test environment. We're planning to go live with that system on June 25th. And I think over the last couple of weeks, staff has started to realize how big of a project that really is and how important it is going to be running parallel systems as we make it through the certified tax rule and all of that information next year that we still have our old system in backup. In IT, you see your security audit project timeline there. That has been awarded to Securance and so we're going to be working with them. It's going to be interesting to see what feedback we get from them. Assembly laptops are available for pickup. If you want a new assembly laptop, you just need to contract IT and get yourself one. And we are adding a security camera up front by the front desk staff to keep them safe and sound. Equipment is configured and ready. We just are waiting on a wall mount for that. Our Laserfish update is happening the weekend of September 14th and 15th, and we're also updating our hardware systems at the Leachate Treatment Plant on September 5th, so today. So hopefully that went well. Out at Bayside Fire Department, they are starting a seven-month firefighter one and two and hazardous materials operation training course. It starts this upcoming Monday. They have four credentialed leaders to provide that, so it's exciting that we're able to provide that right here on the island. And the fire chiefs had met almost every month. They took a little hiatus over the summer and they're starting back up this month. Scott wrote, or Chief Ellis wrote a very, there's so many Scots, I feel like I have to be specific. Chief Ellis wrote a very nice thank you to the Borough Engineering and Facilities Department for what they do to keep that facility up and running. So thank you, Dave, and your staff for all that you do out there. And the state has secured a grant for free smoke and carbon dioxide detectors for homes with Alaskan residents with financial hardships, elderly residents, or members of our special need community. So the fire department will be announcing that, along with they're bringing their car seat fitting program back. So if you don't follow them on Facebook and you're interested in carbon monoxide and smoke detectors or car seat fittings, please do so because they will list it on there. And then you can see at the end of the report, because Assembly Member Smiley said, "I wish there was a way we could track these items." I added the two items that I remember that we were going to flag for fiscal year 26 budget discussions at the bottom and we'll just continue to add to that as we continue to find more topics that we want to remember for fiscal year 26. And finally, pages nine and 10 of your packet are those guidelines for AML. If you have any questions about that, please let me know and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam?
If you wouldn't mind, Ryan, I wanted to make a note in the record that Steve Ames arrived at 7:10 PM while the managers was making a report. Go ahead now, please.
Thank you. Madam Manager, I was wondering if I could get some additional information, and it doesn't have to be at this time, on the ATF burning outdated demolition material at the landfill at your convenience. And the second question that I have is, I see that the Chinnyack School is listed on our roles for conducting maintenance. And I just want to revisit the conversation about the school district's obligation for routine maintenance. I'll use an observation as to drive home my point. The stairs at the Kodiak High School leading up to the commons, we had ample opportunities for those to be maintained. School has started. They are rust-ridden and they look in rough shape. I don't think structurally there's an issue, however, it brings to point the routine maintenance that we ask the school district to obligate themselves to. And I just can't help but wonder why we're at a point with the Chinnyack School water blasting and painting exterior. Could you shed some light on that?
We have a interesting history of maintenance and different maintenance directors, both at the Borough and the school district, with different philosophies on what should be outsourced, what should be done in-house, what the school district should do, what the borough should do. I think yesterday, you should have gotten a letter forwarded to you from the tribal chief and mayor of Port Lyons about issues at the Port Lyons School. That's resulted in, well, we have a weekly meeting with the maintenance staff, so that happened this morning, just a normal one. So we have a meeting on Monday at 1:30 with the superintendent and both our engineering facilities director and our project manager and the same counterparts from the school district to discuss the remote schools manual. I have it, page 79, almost memorized because in that it says that major maintenance is the schools, sorry, is the borough's responsibility, but in order for that to kick in, the project has to be at the $50,000 level and it's per project, per site. So we can't combine a bunch of projects. And that would only kick in if preventative maintenance has been done and it would show, the school district would show that preventative maintenance has been done. So we're going to, that came out in March of this year, even though it's dated in 2022. So we're going to have our discussion based around that manual and that's what we're following because that's from deed. So that would be our guideline of what to follow. And so we're just going to try to get on the same page as the school districts in regard with. in regard with that manual.
Ryan, continue.
So based on what I heard, there is an opportunity for this to actually fall off of our project list pending the outcome of that discussion. Is that, is that a correct assumption based on what I heard?
Depending on what that cost is, I think that cost for painting that school is going to go over the $50,000, and I think we're going to have to be very fair in getting some of those bigger projects done. And I point out the stairs at the high school, as when we talk about preventative maintenance, that's the one thing that I use because it's one thing that you can see and walk by every day, and we've just kind of watched that degrade. So it's interesting that you use that as your choice.
Continue.
So the last thing, then, is I'll be very interested in seeing the burden of proof of the maintenance that had been conducted for the Chinnyack School that led to this now in excess of $50,000 project. And I'd like to get, I guess, some clear definition on what that maintenance cycle looks like. If we just applied paint to 10 square feet of a wall, that doesn't necessarily constitute, in my mind, an attempt at trying to make that whole. So I'll definitely be watching on this one in particular, because I know this shouldn't come as a surprise, but the agreements are ambiguous and therefore left for interpretive value. As you stated earlier, the interpretations don't meet my own. So thank you.
Right. I think that the change in that manual was, the new manual is mostly janitorial custodial related. You have to get all the way back to the, it's page 79 of 83 where you talk about major maintenance and preventative maintenance, and so I think that in itself shows that the focus isn't on preventative maintenance. But the big part for us is that dollar value went from $25,000 to 50. So that's quite a big change for the relationship between the district and the Borough.
Thank you.
Bo? Thank you. I'm glad you're going to be able to spend some time with the school district on this one. I read the letter from Port Lyons from the mayor, and we also, the mayor and I visited Old Harbor this year, as some of you know, and their siding is in poor shape there, and it doesn't look like proper maintenance is happening there, and that siding is rotting. It just seems to be a common theme that we're running into here where deferred maintenance is leading to replacements, which are very costly in nature in comparison. So we have to, we have to get down to who's responsible. I understand it's a challenging statement to make, but if we're going to have to just keep running into this recurring issue of replacement instead of maintenance costs, something has to change. Please let us know how we can lean in on that.
I think that, like, one of the first steps I'm going to ask is, they employ daymen at the remote schools that are responsible for different tasks, and I think the first thing that I want to look at is what they're responsible for and what their tasking is, and do they have the skills and tools necessary to do that? Because when complaints come in, like, the shrubs are overgrown, that doesn't seem like something that should be coming to our, like, that should be something the dayman is doing. So, but I don't know what their tasking is, so that's one of the things we'll clarify or ask about on Monday when we meet with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Messages from the Borough Mayor have none at this time. Next item is new business contracts. We have, first one is contract number FY 2025-5, agreement for the provision of destination marketing and tourism development program with Kodiak Island Convention and Business, excuse me, Kodiak Island Convention and Visitors' Bureau, which is Discover Kodiak. Scott?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to sign contract number FY 2025-05, agreement for the provision of destination marketing and tourism development program with Kodiak Island Convention and Visitors' Bureau, Discover Kodiak.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the last several years, Kodiak Island Borough has entered into an agreement with the Kodiak Island Convention and Visitors' Bureau for the provision of destination marketing and tourism development services on an annual basis. This contract is supported with funds that the Borough collects through the transit accommodations tax, more commonly known as the bed tax. It's levied everywhere throughout the Borough, but the Borough collects the stuff just outside of city limits, and it's used to promote Kodiak to all visitors coming in.
Assembly discussion. Any questions? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries. Six yes, zero no's.
Okay. Next one is contract number FY 2025-22, Baylor floor overlay replacement by Ram Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $207,896.23. Scott?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to award contract number FY 2025-22 with Ram Enterprises Incorporated for the Baylor floor overlay replacement in the amount of $207,896.23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff issued an invitation to bid for this project on July 29th, 2024, advertised for the designated three weeks per KIB code 3.30.040, and the bids were due by August 26th, 2024. There was a mandatory pre-bid meeting held on August 13th. There were two contractors in attendance at the bid opening. Staff received one bid package from Ram Enterprises. Staff determined Ram Enterprises to be a responsible bidder and recommends award to them. I know there were some questions that came up about this last week, and so our engineering facilities director, Dave Conrad, is here to answer those.
Thank you. Dave, I was one that had a couple of questions. One was being, when were they looking to proceed? And I heard in the manager's report, September 23rd.
That's their proposed date. We are, Brecken has sent granite chips to a test lab in Anchorage. This is a special fly ash mix that we're attempting to use granite chips rather than regular, normal shale here in town to see if we can't get a better density out of this, better product. You asked also specifically about warranty, and there are four different distinct warranties within this. There is 12 dot 1 within our contract is a contractor warranting for defective work. There is a warranty of title also required by the contractor, guarantee of work. There is a product warranty within the contract itself. However, none of them have specific dates or times. And I would defend that stating that this week I received two photographs from the guys at the landfill. You go and pour this floor, you let it cure for 21 days. This week, someone backed in, Alaska Waste backed in with a dumpster, and from a four to five-foot height, four engine blocks fell out and hit that concrete floor. I'm not sure that we can actually warrant that. I don't think we can do that. However, we're doing specific testing on this concrete. It is the same mixed design that was used for all of the water structures at the wastewater treatment, our wastewater treatment plant, our Leachate Treatment Plant.
Leachate.
Yeah. And so we're experienced with this particular concrete, and we're trying to make it better. So hence the extra testing, and we'll be pulling cylinders on all trucks. They hope to have this done in a two-week period of time, so that's great. I will add something at the end, if I may, but I hope that answers your questions.
Yeah. One of them also was the potential, as it gets later this fall, whether there's the potential of freezing. So that's why the start date and kind of completion, which is 30 days after they start.
Right. And the ACI 3.5 to 3.8, if you go in the, excuse me, Associative Concrete Industries, you have, with this particular mix, you don't have to worry until there's an hourly temperature requirement. If it goes below 40 degrees, then you have to protect. In this case, because of the time of year, I don't think we have to worry. We can also allow blankets to be put on here, and there is also a space heater as well as a used oil heater in the facility that we can keep the temperature up during cure. I believe that it's better to have a lower temperature for cure than a higher temperature, which I think you would likely agree with, but not freezing or below.
Right. There's a happy medium.
We like to be happy.
Yeah. It's, one of the things I look at, it's less than 20 yards of concrete, and so it's over $20,000 a cubic yard for removal and replacement. Dave, were you able to look and see what it cost the last time we did it?
Last time, it was, the first award was $91,470. Change Order 1 to that job was $11,804.65 for an additional 180 square feet, and Change Order 2 was for $7,657.60 for a Dayton emulsifying top, tough top flowable, two super sacks. The total job cost was $112,000.
Thank you.
And that was in 2015, so this floor has lasted us about 10 years. Prior to that, it was 2007, the floor was replaced.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Ryan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mine's not a question. Mine is just a statement. So as reviewing this contract, in the 261 pages of this contract, you'll be happy to know that I stopped at page six. And the reason I stopped at page six is because the second we start seeing finalized contracts that are stamped draft, I'm going to stop reading them, and this will be the last time that I vote yes on a contract that has draft anywhere in it. So I just want to make sure that you and I have a very clear understanding that a contract, as though it has not been very steadfast in Borough policies prior to at least my tenure on the Assembly, contracts mean an awful lot, and they are specifically designed to convey a message. And when a message is in draft format, there's still interpretive value, and I just can't see myself getting past a draft contract. So you get this one because my goal is to keep you happy. But from here on out, I will not be voting yes on any draft language, period.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
We'll upgrade our quality control prior to this being placed on the, on the agenda. I will, however, say there are times when we have a very short timeframe, so I won't make an excuse, and we'll up our game.
Yeah. And one other thing I mentioned that we talked about in the work session for the public there is that basically the Baylor rebuild will be occurring at the same time, correct? Dave, continue.
Yes. So the Baylor rebuild is rescheduled to, is scheduled now to commence with this, and that will also mean that you will not be able to bring trash out to the landfill. We're going to make alternate arrangements because we have to go and loose fill at the face. We do not want, we don't want the residents at the face, so we'll figure out a different plan for that. Construction, demolition, asbestos should not be affected.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff on this? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions. We have resolution number 2023-3D, amending the Kodiak Island Borough records retention schedule and central filing system to reflect amendments to the data processing series and eliminating the Child Care Assistance Office series. Scott?
Move to adopt resolution number FY 2023-03D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. The data processing series outlined in the Borough Records Retention Schedule has been in place since 1995 and has not gone any, has not undergone any revision since then. So it's very timely that we are presenting this to you to update those series, and we're changing the name from data processing to IT. Our IT Director Fred Berestov is here to answer any questions that you may have about the process that he has gone through. If you have any questions, it's available. And also with this resolution, we are advocating for the removal of the Child Care Assistance Office series from the records retention schedule. The Child Care Office discontinued its operations in Kodiak in 2013. That's 11 years ago, and all the records for that office have been inactive for seven years, or at seven years. And the two, three boxes that were permanent, we have checked with the state if we needed to keep those, and they said, no, we can destroy them because they're copies. They have the originals. So we have done our due diligence, and we ask for your support to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Nova, would you like Mr. Berestov to come forward and make any presentation?
Go ahead. We'd like to see you.
Go ahead and hit that button. Thank you.
As Nova mentioned, the, this record retention has not been updated in, you know, an age when it comes to IT time. So even the languages from back when we were running tape-to-tape, real magnetic tape sort of processes. So us updating it to reflect sort of the current way that IT handles our data basically boils down to, we scope the retention around our ability to protect and preserve our data with the goal of being able to restore it in the event of a disaster recovery, that sort of thing. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Any questions?
Chair? I have a question about the, for the clerks, for process and Roberts rules. We have a resolution here that has two different items on it. The changing infrastructure technology to data processing, and then the elimination of the Child Care Assistance Office records. So there are two, two topics, two issues being addressed in this resolution. Is that, I guess as a clerk, you feel that's okay for our own records? You don't feel we need to divide this question just for clarity, you know, later on, that these are two different resolutions?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly, I am pretty comfortable with the way that we're doing it because we're dealing with the records retention series. The records retention series or the schedule itself is one document, so they're not separate documents. So I believe this is, this is a good way of doing it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no.
All right. Thank you. Next item is ordinances for introduction. We have two. First one is ordinance number FY 2025-5, an ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough rezoning Kodiak Town Site Block 8, Lot 3, Kodiak Town Site Block 8, Lot 4, and Kodiak Town Site Block 8, Lot 3A. Common addresses are 211 Mill Bay Road, 215 Mill Bay Road, and 206 Keshaveroth Avenue, from R3 multifamily residential district to B Business District. Scott?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2025-05 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission, its regular meeting on July 17th, 2024, voted six to zero to recommend approval for case number 24-014 to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly for a rezone. Notices were mailed out to 46 surrounding property owners. One comment in favor of the rezone was submitted prior to the public hearing at Planning and Zoning. At the public hearing, the applicant representatives of the Maritime Museum spoke in favor of the rezone request, and no one spoke in opposition. The ordinance was submitted to the Assembly on August 15th. At that time, it did not progress to a public At that time, it did not progress to a public hearing. Mayor Arnt requested this ordinance be included once more on the agenda for tonight, and here we are.
Thank you. James?
Just wanted to state that I have a conflict in this, and so I would like to have, since this has been brought up again, I would like to have your ruling on that.
For the third time, I'll rule that you have a conflict.
Okay.
You can sit here.
Uh, I'll step out.
If you wish. You won't be disruptive anyway, I understand. So, alrighty. With, um, that Assembly discussion, um, is there any discussion? Once again, this is just to move it forward to a public hearing in two weeks so that we could send out all the notices and, um, get the, um, notification in the paper and advertisements. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the third time we've talked about this, uh, and I think that each time we talk about it, uh, there are valid points on both sides of the issue. Uh, as I've reflected on what this ordinance for introduction actually is, is moving it to the public. We represent the public. Uh, we've gate-kept, uh, gate-kept this, uh, to, uh, discussions, and I believe it's time to hear from the public about what they're looking for. So I'll be in support of, uh, this ordinance for introduction so that we can get some, uh, public feedback and then make, uh, a decision on how best to move forward. Thank you.
Yes. Beau, and then Steve.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Sharrett. I, I do support moving this forward to, and I will vote in favor of moving this to a public hearing. Uh, I will not be supporting the rezone, um, but I'll speak more to that when the hearing comes around if, if we vote in favor. Um, I just want to, just a brief statement to remind, or give the, my fellow Assembly members something to think about between now and the hearing. And I'm just gonna paraphrase Kodiak Island Borough Code and remind everyone sitting up here that we all took an oath to uphold and act in accordance with Kodiak Island Borough Code seventeen point two zero five point zero six zero. Hearing determination, which is where we're heading. The Assembly shall consider an application or commission recommendation for change in the boundary of a district or any other commission recommendation proposing a change in this title, and the report of the commission at its next regular meeting after receipt of such report. And this is important sentence. If, from the facts presented and by the findings of the report of the commission, it is determined that the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice requires the change or amendment of any portion thereof, the Assembly by ordinance shall affect such amendment, supplement, change, or reclassification. Please think about these words that we all took an oath to uphold and act in accordance with. Please read these carefully. Give this a lot of thought. It's not, I, I agree, this is, this is uncomfortable at best because there really is no winner depending on how this goes. I do appreciate Mr. Sullivan speaking to me. Um, he's a gentleman. I applaud his efforts. I do not think I would act in any other manner if I were him. Um, it, it says a lot about his character to reach out to those of us sitting up here and just have a, just a, a very civil discussion about it. So thank you very much for that. But anyhow, I will be voting in favor of moving this to the public hearing. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with five yes, zero no.
Thank you. And he's back. Next, uh, ordinance for introduction is FY twenty twenty-five dash seven, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Section one point one zero point zero three zero, definitions and Section two point two zero point zero eight zero, executive absence to clarify the role, responsibility, and pay incentives of the administrative official. Scott?
Move to advance ordinance number FY twenty twenty-five hyphen zero seven to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Mr. Sharrett, do you want me to give the staff report, or would you like to? I'm ready.
Go for it.
All right. Uh, it is essential to establish a definitive procedure for administration to address emergencies or urgent matters in the absence of the Borough Manager. According to Alaska Statute twenty-nine point two zero point two six zero, in manager form of government, the Assembly is required to designate an administrative official through a resolution to serve as the manager during the manager's absence. The Assembly believes that the effectiveness and consistency of coordination between the manager and the administrative official are enhanced when the manager nominates an individual for the Assembly's designation as the administrative official with the Assembly subsequently confirming the selection through a resolution. In the past, uh, incentives and pay were determined by, I don't know what. It's not written down anywhere, and we could not find that, and so it was designated to be a ten percent, um, pay bump that happened all year long. This change defines what the roles are, what the qualifications are, and what those new pay incentives will be.
Any questions, discussion? Ryan?
I'll just capstone that excellent presentation, uh, with, again, historically, this has been a ten percent over the entire per annum period. Uh, I believe the intent of this original, uh, that the architecture of this was a ten percent per period that was covered, so we've changed the language to indicate a ten percent increase and included, uh, formula in, uh, this ordinance so that there would be no confusion on the basis of this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, zero no.
Next item we have is approval of a letter to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board regarding the possible revocation of the restaurant or eating place license renewal application for Sizzler Burger and Peking Restaurant, License Number two six one one. Scott?
Move to approve the letter to the State of Alaska Alcoholic Beverage Control Board regarding the possible revocation of the restaurant or eating place license renewal application for Sizzler Burger and Peking Restaurant, License Number two six one one.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Assembly. Um, this letter was requested, or this agenda item was requested by Assembly Member James Turner. I would like to, um, talk about, a little bit about the procedure that I went through. I drafted the letter, and at the request of the Assembly last week, um, I also forwarded that letter for everyone to review. I have, uh, received comments from Assembly Member Smiley, and that is before you, um, marked with a red little text box, um, that says Assembly Member Smiley's version. I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page, that that is the letter that's going to be sent if it is approved. So, um, there were a few other things that were requested that we add to the letter, and I, after I, I did a little bit of my investigation, I felt like they were, that were not ready to include those in the letter, or they should not be included in the letter. So I made that, um, decision, and, and I sent some additional information about that decision to the Assembly. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions? Discussion, Jared?
Um, my one question is, um, it's a, it's a rhetorical question, or that is, a question about the rhetoric of this. Um, when the, uh, when the board asks, the board asks municipalities or stakeholders to issue letters of protest or non-protest. Um, and so I, for me, I think it's appropriate to replace, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate for us to ask the board to revoke the license. I think it's appropriate for us to voice protest over the license renewal. It's, it's a subtle change, but I think it's more appropriate to the purpose that, um, that the board has set out for us, um, given our limited, um, you know, scope of authority, you know, over the whole thing. Um, so the, uh, uh, the only thing that, that I would change, um, uh, and I, I'll just go ahead and propose this as an amendment, move to amend the letter, um, to delete, um, asks the Alcohol Beverage Control ABC Board to revoke and just replace that with, um, protests. The Kodiak Island Borough Assembly protests the restaurant eating place license, and so on, and so on, and so on. And then I think there's one more at the end. Um, the last sentence, we strongly advocate for the revocation of License two six six one, two six one one, to say we strongly protest the License Number two six, two six one one.
Renewal?
The renew, yes, uh, protest the renewal of License Number two six one one.
Just trying to clarify.
Yeah, yes.
Um, is there a second to the motion? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, um, I have James and then Scott.
Sorry, uh, usually we have the discussion and then we do amendments, but, um, the reason for asking for revocation or revocation, however you want to say it, um, uh, is because we've already put in a non-protest. So in order for us to go back and say, oh, now, now we protest this, they've already, they've already, um, gotten our non-protest letter, and they've already renewed the application. And being that we were told things during that particular meeting where we approved the, um, non-protest letter, um, coming to light that now trying to sell that particular license, I think that we need to ask for a revocation or revocation of that license because we were not... I mean, it's not like they're under oath when they're testifying here, so, um, we were, we were...
Led to believe?
I'm sorry?
Led to believe?
Yeah, we were not led to believe that, or we were, it was misrepresented that they were going to reopen. And so, um, that is why I think that it should be, uh, revoke or revocation letter to the control board, because we can do that at any time if we feel that the, that the licensee is not, uh, holding up to their end of the bargain. And, and that's why I think that we need to stick with the revocation of this license because they are not sticking to what they said they were going to do, and we've already put in a non-protest a few weeks ago. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Well, I was gonna support, um, Mr. Griffith's changes, and then Mr. Turner has turned my mind again. So I'm not quite sure what to do. I, if the, the State Board agrees with revocation and us asking for revocation, then I'm happy with it. If they do not, if they say that the only thing we can do is either, uh, protest or non-protest, then I think we have to follow Mr. Griffin's statements. I don't know the answer to that, and I think maybe it's up to our manager to contact them or our clerk to contact them and to find out what's the right way to do it. If the right way is only to protest, then I'm happy with Mr. Griffin's, uh, amendments to it. If not, then I'm happy with the original formulation.
At this time, I'd like to let Nova speak because she spent an awful lot of time talking to the state on this, and then Beau, if you wouldn't mind. Nova?
I really do not have an answer for you, but I do have a little bit of an idea on what we can do. Um, I think you can send a letter, a revocation letter, uh, because I don't think it's gonna go anywhere, um, honestly. However, you can, it could be a, a statement addressed to the board. Uh, and then during the biannual process, I think that's when we do the protest, which is due before January thirty-one of next year.
Which is on the second license?
No, for this license. They have another license that's coming up that's gonna go through the same process that we went through.
Same time.
Um, that's for the second floor restaurant. But this one, we're dealing with this. I think you can send a revocation letter, and then we can go through the biannual process, which is due before January thirty-one.
Okay, Beau?
Thank you. I was just gonna echo Mr. Smiley's thoughts on, if we can use the stronger language for the initial letter, that's my preference as well. It makes a more impactful statement from the Borough, um, but I also appreciate Mr. Griffin's point, and so if that's the route we can take, which we can use the stronger language for the permit that's already been granted, and then protest the subsequent application for the second permit, that would be my preference. And thank you for putting so much energy into this topic and educating the Borough and all of us up here. We were, I was certainly clueless without your help, so thank you.
Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything we say was right, except for the License two six one one. We will have the op, so we can send this later, but then we have an opportunity as it goes into its second year. Even though this just got passed, it counted against them since January first. So even though this just passed in August, their second year will begin in January. So the rules say as it enters their second year, the municipality has a chance to protest. So that's the letter we're talking about. The second application has not come before us at all, so it'll go through the regular process, going to all the department directors, and then the department directors, the building official, the fire chief will come back and recommend protest or non-protest. Um, I'm assuming it'll be a please protest like this one, and then we have a chance to do things differently on that second one completely differently.
Any further discussion on this letter? Okay, roll call vo...
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the amendment. That's what I'm getting at. It's a roll call vote on the amendment.
What, what's it?
Okay, so the amendment that is before you is to change the letter from revocation to a protest. So if you're going to vote yes on this amendment, we're changing the language of the letter from a revoke, a revocation into a protest. If you fail it, the original letter that's in the packet is gonna be before you to vote us on the main motion. Is everyone clear on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
No.
Mr. Smiley?
No.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
No.
Mr. Ames?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion failed with five nos and one yes.
Okay, now we have the, the motion as it originally stood on the letter. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next is citizens' comments. Uh, the local number once again is nine oh seven four eight six three two three one. Toll-free number is eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. And I ask you to, um, sign in and state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking, address all remarks to the Assembly as a body, and if calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Thank you. Go ahead, Toby.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to thank you folks for the work you put in.
Is that on? Is the mic on?
The light is on. Yeah, I'd just like to thank you all for your work on the issue, and I appreciate your input and thoughts. And on to September 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Any calls? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Assembly member comments. Mr. Turner?
No further comments. Thank you.
Mr. Ames? No further comments. Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you. Just a note on the proclamation about the Kodiak Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. As the proclamation mentions, it is housed at Kodiak College, and these programs are delivered free to the community. The program is funded completely by grants, grants from the state, from other organizations, and Kodiak College donates space for this and resources and staff time that comes directly out of the Kodiak College, Kodiak College funds as a service to the community. So I just wanted to highlight that as we start thinking about budgets and nonprofits and things like that.
Thank you, Jared. Mr. Whiteside?
No further comment. Thank you.
Mr. Smiley?
Do epic stuff.
Mr. Sharrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. I want to talk about being a landlord and project management going hand in hand. I feel that my short duration here on the Assembly has yielded chaos and chaotic situations that are rushed, and I'm struggling to understand that if we are a professional landlord, why our projects appear before us in an emergent manner. I think that as a team, we need to do better. I think we need to identify these deferred maintenance projects. We need to hold our tenants accountable for the maintenance that we're requesting them contractually to obligate themselves to. And I just feel that until we handle being a landlord just a little better, we're going to continue to struggle with financial problems that plague us with capital improvement projects. And again, I would just encourage our staff to increase those professional interactions with our tenants. Speaking of interactions, I want to share just a quick story of this weekend. Over the long weekend, every dumpster in Kodiak was seemingly full. I found myself going to the Dark Lake dumpsters to try and get rid of my trash unsuccessfully. While I was there, I watched families show up with some mattresses ratcheted strapped to the top of their vehicle, and I decided I would wait and see if they were going to dump them. And sure enough, they get out, they undo the ratchet straps, and I pull forward and have a very quick conversation with them about not dumping the mattresses in the brush pile at Dark Lake. To my surprise, they were very receptive. They did not dump it. They thanked me for keeping them out of trouble. And it, I believe that that interaction lends itself to, I believe people do want to do good. I don't believe people want to nefariously trash our community, but we need to increase awareness of what is and is not acceptable practices. I would feel comfortable saying that if those mattresses were dumped and another situation arose with somebody else wanting to get rid of mattresses, if there are already some there, there would be more. It's weird how those mattresses multiply. So I just think that as we start looking at our solid waste contract that's coming up, as we start looking at the fall and winter months in our community, we should be diligent to ensure proper sanitary practices, housekeeping measures, and making sure that we take advantage of the landfill when they are open with our free, is it 250 pounds?
260.
260 pounds per day, per person, per family? So I think that we should take advantage of that. So those are my only comments today, and I appreciate the work that the college is putting into our adult education as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next Assembly work session is scheduled on Thursday, September 12th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly regular meeting is scheduled on Thursday, September 19th, 2024, at 6:30 in the Borough Assembly Chambers. Early voting for the upcoming October 1st municipal election will be available from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM starting on Monday, September 16th through Monday, September 30th in the Borough Assembly Chambers. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove same sign, motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:05.